This time we'll do a pledge allegiance, please.
Mr. Guston, lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please pledge your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll observe a moment of silence. Madam Secretary, call the robe, please.
Hashev.
Here.
Guston.
Yes.
Zadra.
Yes.
Sfarazza.
Yes.
Dorch.
Yes.
Azzie.
Yes.
Kachal.
Okay. Moo. I'm here.
And, Mr. Mayor, we're very happy you are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Public comment cards? Tom Wilderthen?
Wilburn.
Wilburn?
Yes, sir.
Please come forward. Go around to the speakers, to the microphone there, and introduce yourself, please.
This is the surgery that I got. I'm getting run over by the car.
By what?
I took up to your office twice. All pictures and all the documents, and I gave them to Marsha up there about me getting run over with the car. I took them to Gamick's office. I went to surgery again. It was last, the 31st of December. I got paid three times by some idiot that came on my property. And then he came on, and he hit me with his car twice, and I went over the top of the car twice. And his police department, they ignored it. You ignored it. Gamick ignored it. I testified for Gamick over one of these things when I was in a, involved in a robbery down at Walmart. And I rode the hood on that thing until I got that guy. And you people do nothing. I've had a gun stuck in my face in the last year. I've been beat up. I've had people now are down there spitting off the veranda onto the tenants down below. And your police department and nobody, Health Department or nobody, will go do anything about it. They spit on people down there. They spit on me. I'm not worried about me, but I'm damn well worried about them. Anybody want to? I've had a knee operation. And they did nothing. You, you, people don't have anything to say for yourself, do you?
Thank you very much.
It's down there on Grove Street. It's in the ghetto. I provide them food. I try to take care of them as good as I can, and I get nothing from the city.
Thank you very much.
You're most welcome.
William Fisher?
Let's change the tone a little bit. I want to thank the City Council for passing the paraphernalia law. And I want to thank you for all your good work and for your help over the years. And I want to welcome the new City Council. And I hope that you do as well, as good a job as these guys have. And as far as the police are concerned, I've been working with the homeless and the drug addicted and children for over 10 years. Steve Pitts, his predecessor, we all worked together really close, and they do a good job. Don't let that gentleman get you wrong. I want the new council to know that you've got the greatest police department I've ever worked with. Fire department with Mike Hernandez, it's excellent, excellent fire department. These guys serve dinner and help the kids also. Mayor Kachal, I call him my big brother. He's probably going to be the best mayor the city ever had. He's beautified it. The council's worked with him. I hope our president can do as well as this guy did. And I also want to say one more thing. For the last seven years, I've been blessed to feed 20,000 people Thanksgiving dinners. Tim Trenton at the Harrah's gives me 1,500 dinners. The Cronos give me 1,500 dinners. Mike from the fire department, Bob, my mayor, Steve Pitts, the police chief, and many other people have came down and served families. There's a lot of kids and a lot of families that need dinners, nice dinners. They don't need tuna fish for Thanksgiving. So I've been blessed to do this. I invite you all to come down to Sixth and Center Street, Monday night, 5 o'clock. Tuesday evening, or no, Tuesday morning at 11 o'clock. It's an excellent, excellent dinner. I believe they're five to seven course meals. It's fantastic to be allowed to do this, and I'm sorry the meeting started off the way it did. This is a great town to live in. The people that serve you are excellent people. God bless you all. I got to get to work.
Thank you. William Stewart?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, elected officials, William T. Stewart for the record. Just a couple of things. Obviously, I wanted to say thank you for the years of service to the council members that have given me leaving us. A lot of things have happened over your tenure. Appreciate your service, appreciate your time, your dedication to helping making Reno and Wacho County a better place to live and work. That being said, we're almost on the anniversary date of the call and fire, almost a year to the day. You're going to be talking about both public service as well as fire and EMS and the response, mutual versus automatic aid, all the things that you've been talking about over the years. These are critical issues that are addressed not only in the city, but the county as well. And hopefully with this new elected board of officials that are coming on, both for the city as well as the county, you guys can have serious dialogue about how are we going to protect the safety of the citizens, not only the city, but the county. We're all taxpaying citizens. You are here to represent us. We are here to talk to you, to make sure that those conversations are taking place in a amicable manner, in a very professional manner. It's great to see everybody here today. So far as the turnout, as new elected officials come on board, I hope and wish them all the best. It is everybody's opinion that public safety is something that we all need to be aware of, and that's something that can't be said enough. Time equals lives lost. The people here that sit in front of me, you've done a good job so far as the pass is concerned. It's time to pass a baton. What kind of legacy are you going to leave for the future of the city and the county and the people that are here for you? I thank you for your time. God bless. God bless us all.
Thank you very much. Stephen Jacobs?
Good morning. I'm Stephen Jacobs, Chair of the Reno Senior Citizens Advisory Council. I'm also a volunteer Medicare counselor with the SHIP program. I want to congratulate the mayor on a speedy recovery and hope you stay well. I'd like to thank the members for their strong support for seniors during their term, the outgoing members. I particularly like to thank Judge Hashev for his work with the committee. He's been an absolute major support for seniors. And I know whoever we get as our liaison will continue that work. And I, I know that the new members will support seniors too. I want to support you for the work you did towards WC 2, which apparently, you know, unfortunately did not pass. We believe it would have passed had it not been so confusing to everybody. The small group of people who went door to door, hit the media and everything else we could do to support it. Got the impression that had it been just for seniors, as it was in Mineral County, it would have definitely passed. And we will be back trying to do it again in this coming year. Thank you all.
Thank you. Shirley Diaz?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and members of the public. Shirley Diaz for the record. I am a graduate assistant at the Center for Student Cultural Diversity at the University of Nevada. We specialize in providing expert services for minority students, first generation college students, low income students, and students of the LGBTQ community. So first off, on behalf of the center, I'd like to congratulate the newly elected officials and wish you all success in the new session. Specifically, I'm here to invite you all to an event we're having next Tuesday, which is called the Transgender Day of Remembrance, where we, it's an international event that we hold for students remembering those who have been killed due to transgender violence throughout the world. It's going to be at 6:00 PM in front of the Student Union at the University of Nevada, and it's going to be followed by a panel discussion at 6:30, where we'll discuss how we can make the community safer for students that identify as being transgender. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Richard Jay?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. You're looking great.
Thank you.
Elected members and the public, I'd like to bid farewell to the outgoing council members and say thank you for all the work that you've done for us. And at the same time, welcome to the new members, and we look forward to working with you. Why don't you just take a few minutes and kind of bring you up to the latest as far as Moana Springs? And tell you that Phase 1 is done. Phase 1 consisted of the demolition. That happened on July 10th. And after that, we put the new soil in, the irrigation system, the fencing, and 103 days later, on October 22nd, the fields were done with 183,000 square feet of sod. Now, Phase 2 is going to be starting soon, and Phase 2 consists of an ADA sidewalk, fixing the ramp going in to make it ADA compliant, beautification along the Moana. I've written a letter to Moana Nursery asking them to donate 200 shrubs for the Moana side. Installation of a drinking fountain. Once that's done, Phase 3, at one point, we have no date on Phase 3, but Phase 3 will be the extension of the fields, another 90 feet going to the east. On the east side, there is chain link fence only. That's because we know that once the power lines are buried, we will be extending at 90 feet, extending the irrigation system and putting wrought iron fencing along the way. Just a quick economic impact, we already have three tournaments that have expressed interest in holding part of their games there. Looking at the numbers, we estimate about 120 teams. It's about 3,000 people coming in. Looking at the room nights, about $64,000 in room nights. Taxes, everything else, it's going to pay off right away. We've reached out to the Pepper Mill and Atlantis, and they are putting together packages for these teams to come in with special room nights, food accommodations, and so forth. So with that, I'd just like to say thank you so much for everything that you've done. Thank you for the honor of naming of the fields. That was quite a shock. I think you all know my middle initial now, so thank you and have a great day.
Thank you very much. Mark McKell?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Hi, hi, P.
Introduce yourself for the record.
Mark, Mark, Mark McKell, conservatorina resident. Hi, City Council members, I want to thank you for your service and welcome the new members. Okay, hi, my name is Mark. I'm here today to warn you about drunk driving and getting in the car with a drunk driver. I'm reading from this because I suffer from a traumatic brain injury, and I get off track and sometimes curse involuntarily. When I was a young adult, I had a drunk driving arrest, 23 reckless driving arrests, 32 driving hours spent license citations. In 1989, we were drunk. We drank four gallons of wine and weren't aware to get more. We had a car crash, and the police report said we were going over 100 miles an hour. When we came to a bridge over a freeway, there was a car exiting. We swerved to miss it. I, I'm sorry. I, 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 I know you got out of their business, so I want, I'm getting around out of time, so it's just, oh, fudge. I'm confused. Thank you. Basically, I want to warn you people not to get in the car with a drunk driver.
Mark, that's a great message and I appreciate it. Thank you. Peggy Bowen?
For the record, my name is Peggy Lear Bowen. I'm told in Greek, politics means to serve, and politician means to offer one's service. I want to thank those who have offered that service time and again and have served us well. And I want to thank those who have offered their service, and that offer has been accepted beginning this day. And what I want to say to you in regards to one issue in particular has to do with the fire and the fire departments and the fire department specifically that is located across from Boomtown on I-80. That is in a perfect location to meet the needs of the people on our eastern front, our western front. And there has been talk that maybe that there's going to be moving a fire station, that fire station, to maybe a mogul area that maybe property has been purchased. I drove it, 94-year-old lady who depends, Verdi Senior, who depends on medical help. A lot of the calls to that area are for the seniors in medical help. And driving it just the way I would do it is, is an eight minute, and I was following the speed limits, Your Honor. And I'm glad to see you're well and back in service. I needed to tell you that because I truly, truly care about how well you're doing. We need to keep the fire stations where they are now located. It's been proven time and again they are in good locations. The anniversary of the call and fire, I'm told there was a call and fire prior to the big call and fire. And we had a, fire stations manned in the area at the time. The fire respond, the fire service people responded to that fire and got it out. It was the same cause, high winds, power lines sparking, and, and it got it out. I'm, I was there on about April 23rd of this last year, and I have to tell, this last year, and I have to tell you that there was a power surge to the north wall of Boomtown. And, and the, the request was to the fire station across from Boomtown, is try and save Boomtown. It lapped at the KOA campgrounds. It, flames could be seen from across the river in the bend of the river. I was coming from a Verdi Senior thing. We need this perfect storm not to happen with your senior services. We have a new person in charge of fire. We have a relatively new person in charge of senior services. We need to keep the daybreak program. We need to keep the Wash, senior law project. We need to keep those in place. The previous speaker was absolutely correct. People didn't know what they were voting for in terms of what state services that, that that was going to pay for. Please direct this community to take care of its elders, to take care of its children, and do the heck of a job you've been doing, and don't let movement of a, of a, of a station, of fire stations, such as, I believe it's 35, across. Please, please, keep that an active, well-prepared fire station to meet the needs of our western part of our county. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sam Diney?
Sam Diney, the philanthropical encyclopedia of Reno government. Everything that Sam does is philanthropical. At last count, Sam has saved this city $247 million. And if it wasn't for the media being so deathly afraid and jealous of Sam, that number would be much higher. And by the way, I'm glad that the good Lord listened to and obeyed Sam's prayers and healed our beloved mayor.
Oh, my God.
In a few more.
Excuse me.
In a few more minutes, in about 30 minutes, Sam, in about 30 minutes with the departure of Pierre Hashev to become a judge, Sam will be the most senior person on the city council. Nice charade. Sam will be the most senior person on the city council. He's always been the most qualified person on the city council, albeit the philanthropical member of the city council. Sam, that's me, by the way. I'm Sam. Sam is an Air Force Academy graduate. Sam spent 10 years flying fighters and bombers defending our nation against enemies inside of the borders and outside of our borders. And if you don't think that my credentials are better than anybody on the city council, then you better go read my bio up there on YouTube and throughout the internet. At any rate, I didn't mean to be so self-aggrandizing. I wanted to say something about the baseball team, baseball stadium. Actually, the baseball team. For those who don't know, the Reno baseball team won the entire championship of the nation, the entire champion, triple A championship of the nation. Quite a kudo, and you never see that in the paper. You never see that. All you hear is this bruhaha about who's paying this and who's not paying that. Actually, our baseball team could probably beat a few of the major league teams. Anyway, here's my old freight $100 bill. I've spoken in favor of the baseball stadium more than all the citizens add together, and I've spoken against the baseball stadium more than all the citizens added together. Now, we've got this bruhaha going down, and I'm going to bet this hundred freight, old $100 bill that the city council is going to do the right thing. As I close out, now we've got a change of regime, and this is my kingdom right here. This little space right here, and of course over County Commission and the other various governments. This is my little kingdom here, and I want to tell, remind you of the rules and tell the new people what the rules are. Freedom of speech, First Amendment, the Constitution brought up to date a couple of years ago, a couple of decades ago now. And it says, quote, "As Americans, we have the profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issue should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes untwistingly sharp attacks against government and government officials and government bureaucrats," unquote. So if some people think that Sam is vehement now and then, this, the First Amendment was made for vehemence. It was made. Look, and he's nodding his head. Now he's leaving, and he agrees with Sam after all these years. What are their chances? Maybe he'll be at this end of the thing.
He just had a headache.
Those are the rules, and I promise not to be vehement, except where the media is involved.
Thank you very much. I have no other public comment cards. Anybody else got any public comment cards? Here in nine, I'll close the public comment. Now we'll move to approval of the agenda. Mr. Guston?
Move to approve.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the minutes, minutes for October 24 and November 7.
Move to approve.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Cash disbursements, October 28th, November 3rd. Mr. Hashev?
Yeah, for the last time, Mr. Mayor, I have, this is the last time I'm going to get the chance to say this, but there are no Martin Marietta expenses on the, on the. I say that all the time, but this is the last time I'm going to get the chance to say it, so I have no disclosures to make this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Guston?
No, sir. No expenses included.
Mr. Dorch. Okay. Anybody else? All right, Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion. Second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll go to old business, item C1.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I was going to make a, this last week, but I was hoping to make a motion that 10% of the franchise fees from the waste management would go to the Arts and Culture Commission so that, to help them with their budget, so it'll be a more stable budget. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And I have a motion and a second.
Just a question for staff.
Yes.
Andrew, what's going to be the anticipation as far as collection? What's that going to generate?
It's about 3 million.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, it's about 3 million. I'd look to staff to give a more precise answer.
Does a portion of that still go towards streets? We at one time had allocated the franchise towards the rehabilitation of city streets?
No, I believe unless staff corrects me, I believe it all goes to the general fund.
Mr. Chisel?
Mr. Chisel's standing up, so maybe I'm wrong.
Robert Chisel, Finance Director, the right-of-way franchise fees go to streets, but this does not go to streets. And at this time, we don't really have an idea of how much, it's only projected how much the franchise fee will gain because there will be changes in the, the services provided, and so it's just an estimate at this time.
That's all I have.
Mr. Dorch?
So is this in addition to what we're currently spending on the arts?
That would be up to you and the other, how you want to do that. It's in the budget. It doesn't lock you into doing anything the next budget year. But to me, it would give a more stable base. We did this many years ago with the room tax. And if it's stable coming into the city, and that's what's being projected all the time, it's up to you to decide what you want.
Dave, can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
And how much, how much are we spending currently on the arts?
Well, it depends on how you classify what they spend on it.
Ms. Fay?
For the record, I'm Christine Fay, Resource Development and Cultural Affairs Manager. The Arts and Culture Commission's budget's $182,500, which comes from the Room Tax Fund. And then we do have additional monies that are spent, of course, out of Cultural Affairs, which is general fund money, which helps to support the McKinley Arts and Culture Center and some of our other programs. But the bulk of it is the $182,500, which comes from general fund. In addition, there is, as part of the general fund, sorry, from the Room Tax Fund, as part of the general fund, one of our grant programs, which is $62,600, is also allocated toward the arts, and that's for our cultural event grants.
And then do we consider the contribution we make to Art Town and the other contributions like that? Is that, that moves it up also?
It's all part of the arts, yeah.
Yes, those come out of a, also general fund. They come out of the manager's and council budget. And that is $125,000 to Art Town. It's $50,960 to Pioneer and $8,000 to See Our Arts. So that would also be arts funding, which is, that's going out of sponsorships.
Yeah, and I mean, from my standpoint, I just, I think it's more appropriate for us to address this during the budget cycle, you know, and make a determination at that point in time. I mean, especially when staff doesn't know how much is really there yet. And, you know, if we're going to decide, okay, if we're, if we're going to pull the money that we're currently spending out of the general fund and then use this, it's, it could actually be less than what we're spending today on arts. So I just think, to me, it's just more appropriate to address this during, during the budget cycle.
Yes, Mr. Hashev?
So I just make sure from the city manager's perspective, the amount, if we do the 10%, the amount that would be allocated would be the 3 million? Or 10% of 3 million?
Yeah, it would be 10% of the 3 million based on.
So it's 300,000, basically?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I, I am sensitive to this issue of having a stable source. I mean, we just went through the franchise agreement, so. And we all know what the arts does for this community, and it's really a multiplier, an economic multiplier, so I think it's money well spent. So, and, and to Dwight's point, I think at the end of the day, the council will have to look at its priorities, but at least this 10% would be allocated as a baseline for, for the arts community. So I'm, I'm supportive of it.
So, Dave, if I do understand, was that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. If I do understand the motion, it is not identified with.
Okay. If I do understand the motion, it is not identified within the motion that it be incremental additional dollars to the current budget, that it could be a dedicated source to at least secure funding for the arts.
Correct.
And it's not binding. I mean, it could be changed during the budget cycle also.
Absolutely.
But that's the only, my only concern, I mean, it sounds like we spend a lot more than that today on the arts, a lot more than the three.
Gives us a base, and then after that, we can decide what we need to do.
I'm fine. We can address it during the budget cycle, too. I mean, it's, it's not a binding...
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, when you say it's not binding, I mean, it's binding. We're approving it today, so it's binding.
But during the budget cycle, you can change it.
Right.
It's not, I mean, this isn't...
Well, this would give it the base, and then after that, we can change whatever...
We could add to it during the budget cycle. I mean, it's, I mean, that's what I'm saying is it's, if we had to pull money from this for some tragic reason, we could.
Right.
I mean, it's not, it's not binding in that sense. I mean, so it can be addressed during the budget cycle.
Well, you can do a lot of stuff in the budget cycle, but I'm just, I mean, that's your opinion as to whether it's, I mean, I'm voting for this because I want ten percent to be dedicated to the arts.
And I don't have, like I said, I don't have an issue, because I think we're spending a lot more than that today.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item C-two.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, can I jump in on this?
Yes, sir, you sure can.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we, the councils work very hard to try to take a lot of these issues that have been on our table for a long, long time. I think we got most of them. This is one that a person I would have liked seen resolved, so the new council would not have to deal with it, but we just frankly ran out of time, and we've had some discussions on and off with our county counterparts about trying to resolve this true-up dispute that we have with the county and avoid litigation, as well as trying to come to an automatic aid agreement, which means closest station responds first. I don't know where this is gonna go, Mr. Mayor, but I do think it would be important for us to kind of jump-start the negotiations with the county. At least, that would be, as the gentleman said, we need to leave a legacy as our existing council and our members outgoing, as well as the new members that will have to, will have to continue to negotiate with the county. So I think we should jump-start this process by asking the county, at least offering them that if we, if they paid four-hundred thousand dollars and we're gonna owe them three-fifty for the final true-up year, so that would be a total of seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, then to settle this true-up litigation, so our staff does not have to be in litigation. And my time wastes time and resources when we can be working on more important fire issues, which are regional issues, regionalizing the fire department, that this would be a good start in starting those negotiations with the county before some of the members here leave the table. And obviously, Mr. Mayor, that would be, you know, staff has to review it, the city attorney has to review it. The scope of the settlement would include resolving all of the claims between the parties. There would be some few claims that wouldn't be resolved, which we have talked about before, which is retiree health insurance, workman's comp, third-party liability, et cetera. And that, again, like I said, would start the negotiations, and then the county would have the opportunity to make a counteroffer, accept it, and at least respond to the new council on trying to resolve this fire issue.
Is that a motion?
Mr., that's a motion?
Yeah, I mean, that, with those parameters, subject to the city attorneys, they need to dot the i's and cross the t's, but really, the county, I think, is looking for some kind of a monetary offer, and I think this would be a good start to see where the county is.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the discussion.
Discussion. Mr. Guston.
Yeah, I was gonna second. The motion is that it's a starter, as PR said. That's where we need to be, because the other starter is three million dollars. I mean, we just say, okay, there's three million dollars on the table, and we're gonna go to court, and we're gonna find out which way that's gonna go, and I think that's unrealistic. We're gonna get all three million dollars. I know that there was an offer before, which was a couple hundred thousand dollars, so we're talking seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and Judge Haschaff, not actually put your hat on yet, but that's a realistically, realistic compromise from the three million dollars, and probably realistically where we'd end up being? Is that, is that your...
I don't know. It's a start. As I mentioned, the reason this has been on the agenda the last couple of times is hopefully we come to an agreement. It just didn't happen in time, but I think this is a good starting point for the new council to start negotiations with the county on what a realistic number would be.
And it requires some dialogue from them, which we haven't really gotten to this point.
Right, right. And they would put this on their agenda for their next fire board meeting, and then they would have a chance to consider it, and then potentially make a counteroffer or accept it, or offer something new.
Well, I, too, will support your motion. Thank you.
Mr. Dorch.
Pierre, I thought, I thought they already turned down four-hundred.
Well, they turned down seven-fifty. Remember the motion that Dave made?
Right.
So I'm trying to hopefully get us closer to a solution.
And I guess, I mean, when you say this is a starting point, that's where, I have some reservation. I mean, this is really, that's, this is as low as I'm willing to go.
Oh, I understand.
You know.
I think you made your position pretty clear where you stand on this. So to me, by, by at least starting the process, at least preserving some of us that have been here for a long time, I mean, we've truly tried to resolve this automatic aid issue with the county, and it really came down to try to settle a dispute and potential litigation.
Absolutely.
So as Dan said, and the intent of the motion is just to jump-start the process. You and the new council and the mayor will have to, will ultimately have to decide what is, what's a fair number.
And this does not stop, stop us from moving forward with litigation?
Well, the spirit of this would be to try to settle it before litigation, so that you'd get a response by the county by their next meeting, as I understand it.
But I, didn't they cancel their December meetings, I heard?
I don't think so. No, they moved some stuff to their December.
They can't cancel. They gotta meet.
That's what I thought, but it was on their agenda to cancel them.
No, they moved some items that they took care of yesterday to the December agenda.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Ms. Xandra.
Pierre, for clarification, the county's current best offer is two-hundred thousand.
No, there were some, there were some discussions, and it seemed to center around that number. You know, if both parties want to resolve the dispute, nobody's gonna be hard and fast on one position or another. I mean, the intent of this motion would be to jump-start the process with the county.
Which we clearly need to do.
Right.
Mr. Fraser.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Ms. Ralston, I'm very sorry.
Pierre, on the terms of the automatic aid agreement, would this be for the eighteenth month term or for a year?
Well, when we had discussions with the county, it was for twelve months. If the county wants to come back and decide that it's eighteen months, that would be part of the negotiations. I mean, obviously, the city attorney's office needs to work on the, on the details. The automatic aid would be limited. I mean, staff and fire would have to work on that, I mean, along the same discussions that we've had before. But again, really, the intent here is just to jump-start the negotiations and hopefully get the parties back on track in resolving the automatic aid.
Yeah, the only concern I would have is the safer grant, when's the safer grant expire with the city, Andrew?
June of two thousand fourteen.
So we would be okay within this parameter?
Right.
Okay.
And if, for whatever reason, there's, it's not, I mean, I would rely on staff to come back to the new council and say, here's why it's not working, and what do we need to do differently.
Okay, Mr. Azzi.
Maybe you can make that part of the motion, Pierre, that if it is violation of the safer grant, that we can rescind it, so it's not an official offer.
Yeah, it's, it, yeah, I mean, we don't, we can't violate the safer grant. I mean, that's clear, and that's the details that staff has to work out, but the, I'm bifurcating the two. I mean, what I'm saying is, let's settle the true-ups, and once we have the true-up settled that has nothing to do with the safer grant, then the parties can commence some kind of resolution on the automatic aid.
Yeah, I personally think the county's getting a great deal with four-hundred thousand. I thought they were getting one with seven-fifty, but when I look at what the, was the voters voted on, I know it was poorly worded, in my opinion, because everybody wants the closest response, but they didn't say for free in there. But this is a way to get it started, and I'm willing to give up a couple hundred thousand dollars just because the voters said this is what they want, so. And good work, Pierre, you've worked on this hours and hours and hours.
Everybody's worked hard on it, so let's see if we can get to a reasonable conclusion here, so.
Ms. Xandra, do you have something?
Yeah, it really is a very generous offer by the city, once again. Similarly, when we renegotiated the RDA piece, but it really does speak to our commitment to having a good working relationship and serving our community. That's the first commitment that we have, so getting this resolved could potentially be the stepping stone that we need to bring us to the regional service that we need for fire. So regrettably, I would support it, and really good job, really good job, Pierre.
Any other discussion? I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item C-three.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chaser, Reno City Attorney's Office. This was continued as requested by council to this meeting in case direction wanted to be given relating to the automatic aid issue. If you disposed of that in your last motion, you can just take this item off, or you can hear it as you, in your pleasure.
I have one speaker first. Mr. Stewart.
Good afternoon. Thank you again for your time. William T. Stewart, for the record. Yeah, fantastic conversations, service, council member, Xandra, serving the public, what's best. I know, obviously, money's involved in politics. That's something that's been dealt with for the past two-hundred years, and goes back forever, by making sure that the constituents are served in the best manner possible with the closest resource, as the advisory question just illustrated, eighty-seven percent to thirteen percent. Obviously, council member Azzi, it wasn't worded properly, but people, when they're down on nine-one-one, they want somebody there as quickly as possible. They don't care what color the truck is. They just want somebody there to take care of the problem. And I think that these conversations amongst yourselves can only do great things, not only for the citizens of, and it's not city versus county, it's all of us, right? We all have personal, no matter what your background is, I mean, we all have a commonality, and we're all basically citizens of this county, and trying to provide the best services you guys can do, and the county can do, and Sparks can do, and, you know, regionalization, if that's gonna be the topic and what we're gonna do going forward, I think that's the best way to do things, and, you know, obviously, these views are mine and mine alone, and I just, I can't press upon you guys enough to try to keep that dialogue open and make sure that there is serious conversations, whether it's the money. Things can be settled when you sit down and talk to each other instead of sending memos back and forth and figuring out what you're gonna get on the next agenda. You know, you guys have in your annual report right here, two thousand twelve, pictures of the column fire, and that's a great example. Fifty federal, state, local, and volunteer agencies responding to take care of the people of Reno. I think you guys can handle the consolidation of both the governments and figure out what the best people and the best topics and the best way to provide those services are, whether it's fire, public safety, EMS, it's a whole nother thing with the Board of Health and all that issue, so just making sure that people can get the service they deserve in a time as critical as possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Item C-three.
Yeah, I was, just to echo Mr. Stewart's comments, I mean, that's the intent of this motion, is to, it's always been community first and try to resolve this issue, and hopefully, we're getting started in the right direction. So I think we've already done C-three, Mr. Mayor, with the prior motion, so I don't think we need to revisit it.
All right. Item C-four.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
As I've done in the past on all other baseball-related items, I am providing the following disclosure of a potential conflict of interest. From approximately October of two thousand seven through February of two thousand ten, I was employed full-time as the Director of Corporate Partnerships with S.K. Baseball, who operates portions of the Reno Aces Baseball Stadium. After February of two thousand ten, I remained as an independent consultant for S.K. Baseball until about August of two thousand ten. I have not been employed as either an employee or consultant for S.K. Baseball since August of two thousand ten, and have not had any form of business relationship with S.K. Baseball since that time. Also, I do not anticipate having any form of business relationship with S.K. Baseball in the future. I am disclosing my prior relationship with S.K. Baseball, so the public is informed of these facts. I do not feel that my prior business relationship with S.K. Baseball will affect or impact either my personal judgment or the independent judgment of a reasonable person in my situation. Accordingly, I am going to fulfill the duties of the office to which I was elected under the public policy of this state, and I am going to be voting on this matter. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I've provided a written copy of this for the clerk.
Is there any public comments on this?
I have none.
Yeah, do we, is there a, is there a staff report or the...
Yes.
I think there, for the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney, I think there was a late staff report. Essentially, staff went back, discussed the form of the guarantee with Mr. Katsov and Mr. Simon, and came back with a document that I believe you have that, that is the final settlement, or the final limited guarantee that staff believes will work in this instance, so.
Okay. Well, Mr. Mayor, I know you've got an agenda in front of you with the new council, so there's no secret that I've been supportive of baseball and their investment in this community, and this personal guarantee is very important, because it's a personal guarantee that we don't currently have, and what that personal guarantee provides, that this debt on the stadium must be paid off within the thirty years, and if the team moves for any reason, and that means any reason, then this debt must be paid off, and it's personally guaranteed by Mr. Simon and Mr. Katsov, which we don't currently have. Even under the old agreement, they could move the team outside the fifteen-year threshold period, and it would not be a default, and there would be no obligation at that point. So I'm not gonna go through all of the benefits, because there are several benefits that the city receives in exchange for this refinancing. We've mentioned them numerous and numerous occasions, including releases that the, that the baseball has made before our redevelopment settlement. The list goes on and on. And just, just for, the intent of my last motion was to approve both the support agreement and also the settlement agreement, and it included the guarantee. And as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Mayor, I think the council should move forward with this personal guarantee, because it's important, and I'm willing to listen to any other comments that other council members may have before I make the motion.
Mr. Dorch.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you know, I've been approached by all the new council members to have this item continued, so that they can get their arms around this issue. I know there's other agreements that have to come back to the new council, and they're reluctant to have us move forward with this until they get their arms around the issue, and they know that there's other issues that have to come before them, that are wrapped around this agreement. So they're really asked us to continue this, so that they can take a look at it, since, since they're gonna be looking at the other items coming before them that are related to this.
Mr. Mayor, I've heard the same from the new council members, and in particular, it's because if there is future action taken by this new council, be it during the budgetary process or before, approval of this today will put us in a position where we've seen the, the history that was created in Michigan, Minnesota, of the bond status ratings going to junk bond status. If we move forward, this ratifies the prior action, and the new council hasn't had a chance. They'll be living with that result, if indeed, that were to happen. They want to be able to have an expression in making that, this decision.
Okay. Mr. Guston.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I am going to support the motion by Mr. Haschaff. It's been no secret either where I stand in the baseball. I think it's good for the city, the revitalization of downtown, et cetera. I, I think that the guarantee that's come forward now with Mr. Katsov and Mr. Simon is something we don't have now. I don't want to revert to the previous agreement we had. I think we're better off with a new agreement if we move forward today and do that. I don't want to take any, any weapons or any, any tools out of the kit, as Councilman Haschaff frequently says, for the new council, but, but right now, I think it's smart for us to move forward, because there's uncertainty with what we have existing. This gives us some certainty, and having a guarantee from the people that are willing to put that guarantee forward, I think, is an enormous benefit to the city of Reno. So I, when that becomes a motion, I will, I will certainly support it.
Okay. Mr. Azzi, you had something?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll follow your lead and Pierre's lead on this. I think that, I'm still here, it's still our job to do this, just like we did the garbage franchise agreement a week ago, you know. When do you start saying, again, that we're lame ducks? I mean, all of you are, two years from now, you're out. So should you not ever sign an agreement that lasts more than two years, because the next council should look at it? I think that's an important thing. And other things have come up on baseball, in my opinion. El Paso is building a triple-A stadium, and they bought the Tucson Sidewinders or something like that to move, to move to El Paso. So if people think these teams don't move around, you're wrong. And if you think there's not gonna be an opportunity for this team to leave this area, you're wrong. Whether they do it or not, it's up to them. This guarantee today will assure that they will not. And we have done, in this community, similar things for other people. Again, we've bent over backwards for Apple. We've built the auto museum for people. We built the movie theater. We've done stuff with, with money to help our people here. I know it's been portrayed as us bailing out a billionaire. In my mind, I'm trying to bail out the guy that's trying to build a twenty-five-million-dollar hotel next door, and the guy from Louis Bass Corner that came and asked us to please approve this, and the Lincoln Lounge, and Slice, and all the local businesses that are around here that really need this for their existence. It's not about Mr. Simon. He could, he's not gonna lose a meal over this, whether we do this deal or not. It's not about him at all. To me, it's what's best for this community, and I think that we've done the work. This, to me, is a good deal for the city. I think it's a better deal than we made before, actually, that we all voted on. This clarifies a lot of those things. I think it makes it a better deal for the city of Reno, so I'm... a better deal for the city of Reno, so I'm prepared to move forward.
Okay. You want to make a motion, Mr. Hasheff, Ms. Ralston, I mean?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I, I'm not going to reiterate what I said before on this, because I think everyone knows where I stand, but I, I think it's important to point out that that's the reason why the state law requires a five-sevenths of a vote of a council to go out for a general obligation bond. And I think this is a little bit different, with all due respect to my friend and colleague, Councilman Ayazi, I think it is different, because you're putting an obligation to a future council of a million dollars out of, out of the general fund. And the reason why this isn't going through the process, through the state law, is because it's an appropriation. But what I do think, in fairness, is there's two sides to every issue, and I think the new council should have the opportunity to be able to get all the information, because this goes back a long time, I mean, this stadium deal came to us, and I do believe that before they're put in this position, that they should be able to get all the information and all the facts, before this decision comes to them. So, you know, I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, what, where your position's going to be on this, but I think what I would support is, is not rejecting this today, but allowing the, the future council to determine, to get all the information, and determine how they're going to feel about this issue, because it's going to be an obligation in the, the future years.
Well, then, the new council will have four months before they approve a budget. See you, Mark. Don't run over anybody, Mark, pay attention. All right. Everybody will have a chance before we approve the budget, or expenditures. Mr. Hascheff?
Yeah, let me just respond quickly to that. I mean, there's a few other agreements that need to be executed before the end of January, so the council will have an opportunity to weigh in on this. This is a yearly appropriation, so as I see it, we don't tie the council, future councils' hands, if they decide they want to appropriate, they can appropriate, if they don't, they don't. It's been structured in a way that we're not paying baseball any more money than they would otherwise receive in the early years. If, what's on the agenda today is the guarantee, it's the most important item in the set of documents. Why would I want to continue the guarantee, when I've already approved the support agreement and settlement agreement? Certainly, I want the guarantee, so I don't want to deprive the council, the future members, of deciding what they think is best for the city, but I certainly don't want a personal guarantee, which is a critical part of this equation, to somehow get postponed, postponed, when it should be executed as soon as possible. With that, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make a, a motion to go ahead and approve this personal guarantee to be signed, that has been signed by Mr. Simon and Mr. Katsov, and authorize you to sign that immediately, and deliver it to baseball.
Second? I have a motion, and a second. Discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm inclined to, to side with the motion, because if I, if I vote with the prevailing side on this, I can make a motion after the new council is sworn in to reconsider this item. So, I think I'm inclined to side with the prevailing side on this, and we'll, we'll hear it later today.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Clarification on the motion, it was to have the mayor sign it immediately?
Yes.
So, then the contract would be in place?
Well, I mean, I let the lawyers decide whether, I mean, I'm authorizing, like we traditionally do, once the motion is put-
So, there wouldn't be much to reconsider, then?
Well, I mean, we're asking the mayor to sign it, because it's already been signed by the other side, and the mayor can sign it and deliver it.
Ms. Xandra?
Okay, two questions for staff. What does immediately mean? Define that, give me the timeframe, please.
Right now.
For the contract signature, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. If I understand your question, Councilmember, I think the motion was for the mayor to sign it and deliver it in a few minutes, soon as he completed the signature. That's the intent of Councilman Hascheff, if that's the intent of his motion. He would define the timeline in this motion.
Yeah, I was going to say, in fairness, I'm the motion maker, the intent of the motion would be, I mean, we have, we have the rest of the agenda items that we have to deal with, we have to canvass the votes, and then you have to swear in people, obviously, right? And then there's the reception, and then if the council wants to take some kind of motion for reconsideration, they could do it at that time, presumably. So, as soon as the mayor has the opportunity, I would assume he could sign it and deliver it. Whether that means he has to leave right now and do it, that's not the intent of my motion.
Well, do you have a copy of the contract, or whatever it is I need to sign?
Tracy Chase, I think Deputy City Attorney Shipman has those available for you, or has provided them?
I think they're, for the record, John Shipman, I think they're currently, they're in a manila envelope, or?
How about we do this?
I'll-
You, you just sign it, Mr. Mayor, whenever you want.
Well, I mean-
I'm not going to get hung up-
I'll sign it now, and have Mr. Ayazi run the meeting.
But I still have one more question. Jonathan, I guess it's you, or maybe Robert, it's you. So, if this were to happen, although three of us have been against this expenditure from the general fund since day one, and every future council member who will be sitting up here later today, has expressed during their campaign, they're against it, you're saying that we would have no opportunity to reconsider this at either today's date? Certainly, we would be able to, when we're at least in the budget cycle process. What, then, is the risk? You brought Kendra in to speak to us a couple of weeks ago, to express a risk that would be involved, what is that?
Yeah, it's, Councilmember Xandra, as you mentioned, there are a number of milestones in the current agreement, in the settlement agreement. We have a January 31st, 2013 date, where some definitive agreements have to be in place, a stadium interlocal, a trust agreement, a, a management and operating agreement, these are all agreements that would come back to the council for input, and for blessing and approval. After that, there would be a period of time, budget cycle, so between March and June, where there would be a decision made upon whether or not to appropriate the million dollars for the, you know, first payment, actually, it's $850,000 in two payments over, starting in December. That, that is, that's the next decision point, so if the council decided at that point they didn't want to participate in that, then they wouldn't have to make that appropriation. The agreement's clear that that's their decision to make, and it doesn't, they're not bound-
And what consequence would we experience, if that action was taken?
What we've been told is, it's difficult to, to understand exactly what it would be, I mean, it, maybe it would be a difference between if the bonds were sold versus not sold. So, I mean, what, what you're looking at is a credit risk that a credit agency might rate you on, on the basis that you had an obligation, or some sort of contractual commitment to pay something, and then you didn't make that payment. Again, that would be a, a risk that we don't have control over, per se, but a credit agency could look at whatever you do, or the next council does, and then that might impact your credit. And that'll probably depend upon whether, where the debt is, if the debt has been issued, if it hasn't been issued, those, those are the types of things that would come into that.
So, if not this year's budget cycle, certainly by next year's budget cycle?
Again, I, I can't speak, and I, if Mr. Chisel, or somebody from finance would like to, I mean, it is a potential risk, I mean, and we just wanted to make sure council was aware of that as a risk.
And what happened, was it Michigan or Minnesota?
Uh, yeah, there was a deal in Minnesota, it was a lease revenue deal, it was a little different deal in certain respects, but similar in other respects, you know, where there were, there were bonds sold on the market, there was a decision, it was a revenue bond sort of situation, where they decided not to make a payment, an appropriation, that's all they had to do, and then the credit agency looked at them and downgraded them based upon that decision.
To what level?
That I don't know, I wouldn't.
Robert?
Mr. Mayor, and Councilwoman Xandra, if I can just jump in here a little bit, I think what, what staff's trying to do here is, I mean, we're really trying to project what a rating agency would do, and it's very difficult, obviously, for us to, to project what they would do.
Understand, but there's some history.
There is some history, and the case in Minnesota is where the, the deal was in place, they were relying on that stream of revenue for these bonds, and had, you know, a, a structure where they didn't necessarily have to make the payments, and so that city, and I apologize, I don't remember the name, stopped making those payments, and as a result of that, a rating agency, and maybe Robert knows the rating agency, I don't even remember, downgraded that city. So, how this would fit in, under these circumstances, and just the timing of, you know, if we have issued the bonds, if we haven't issued the bonds, I mean, it's difficult for, I think, staff to project what, at what point the rating agency would look at us, and, and say, you know, we believe you violated this agreement, so we're going to downgrade you.
Well, I'm not, I'm not so certain that it matters, that we know if it's going to be this budget cycle, or the next budget cycle. It will happen, most likely, based on what we heard from the council members who are coming on board, that they were against any kind of extended deal, or modified agreement with, with baseball. So, if it's, if it's this budget cycle, or next budget cycle, the reality is, we're facing our bond rating for the city of Reno's general fund, not just our, our redevelopment agency fund, but the general fund of the city of Reno hitting a junk status, correct? We, we face that risk. We don't know the timeframe, but if a vote were taken to this year, or in a following year, in the budget cycle, not to fulfill this budget requirement within this agreement, we could hit junk bond status, by history that we've seen in another city.
Councilwoman, I think the answer to that is, is yes. I mean, there is a risk of that, under this, under this deal, that if we stop making those payments, under this obligation, that there's that risk, based on what we saw in the, in the example from the city of Minnesota, that there is a risk that we would be downgraded. I don't know to what level, I don't remember if it was junk bond status in that example or not, and maybe Mr. Chisel knows the answer to that.
I, I do not recall the rating, and it's, it's good to point out, both Moody's, and Standard and Poor's do not disclose how they rate a particular entity or a city. So, we can only guess what they would use to provide a rating for the city in the future. However, as you mentioned, the city in Minnesota did have an impact on their rating by not making the payment, and us not making a payment may have a potential impact on our rating in the future.
Did this happen with the train trench, with the bonds, or was there something that we did get downgraded over?
A lot of our bonds have been, Robert Chisel, for the record, a lot of our bonds have been changed in the rating, particularly in the last few years, because of the coverage ratio, a lot of them have been downgraded.
Right. Discussion?
Question for Jonathan. So, we keep talking about these other agreements that have to come back to the city.
Yes.
Is this deal contingent upon those deals being approved?
Um, to a point, I mean, the, the notion is, we have the support payment agreement, so the city, approving that agreement is, agreed to go ahead with that, at least the process to get that done. There is, in the settlement agreement, there is, again, there's that July 31st date, in, in January, where these agreements have to be put in place, or it amounts to a default of that agreement, and that it's potentially, the agreement is moot at that point.
But what does a default of the agreement mean?
Of the settlement agreement.
If we approve this today, the settlement agreement's in place, is what you're saying?
Correct.
So, anything that we do in the future would be a default of that agreement?
No, no, I, I mean, I think that one was, if, if the, if the agreement, if whatever happens, in the city, we're not to perform, either by not appropriating, or by not cooperating with the, you know, creation of these agreements that need to be made for the restructuring, the way it's written is that the existing agreement would essentially fall away, and we'd come back to where we are today, in terms of the rights and remedies that baseball, the developer currently has, under the existing documents, would, would be his rights and remedies today. The, the damages, and anything, I mean, there's a specific provision in the settlement agreement, it limits liability, you're never, it's never going to be a instance where there's going to be a money damage against the city for failing to appropriate, that's, there's express language in the agreement about that. What it does is, if you fail to do that, then you just go back to where we are today.
And, and the restructuring agreement is with the redevelopment agency, correct?
It's with both. It's with both the redevelopment agency and the city.
So, why would this agreement not be with the redevelopment agency?
Well, this agreement, well, the, the primary consideration for the settlement agreement is the million dollars per year that the city is paying. The city, this is a thirty-year term for this agreement, the, the agency is actually going to expire between now and the end of that, so it's going to be the city that's going to be the one that's going to need that guarantee, to make sure that we can, we can have the stadium, if, in the unlikely event, the team were to leave.
Okay, so, the agreements that we approved last week, you've got one agreement that's with the city, and one agreement that's with the redevelopment agency.
We've got one agree, yeah, and it's with both our parties to it, correct?
The agreement with the city, that's what obligates us to pay the million dollars here, that whatever starts at $850,000.
The support payment agreement, and the settlement agreement, both have that as in there as obligations, yes.
And that's paid to, I thought the way this was set up, that that was going to be paid to the redevelopment agency, and then the redevelopment agency would pay that to the stadium authority?
Potentially, yes, and that, that gets to the definitive agreements, and how that is going to be structured. We still have some questions about technically how we can do that, and the notion is, regardless of how it ultimately comes down, that we're going to structure the payments in a way that are legal, that gets the money from point A to point B for the restructuring. But whether it's going to go flow through the agency, on one hand, or if it's going to flow through a stadium authority, on the other hand, is, at this point, we're kind of waiting to see what the county does, to see what happens here.
But overall, it's your opinion that there is no risk to the city, if we approve this today, and you bring a, a payment agreement, and the, and the new council denies that, there's no risk to the city in being in default of this agreement?
No, I, I can't say there's no risk, all right? The, there's, there's always risk in anything that we do. Anybody can sue anybody for anything. I can tell you, this agreement has been written, structured, and tailored in a way to minimize liability, to the extent, you know, possible. I mean, we, and I feel comfortable in that this is a defensible agreement, that, you know, that we're not leaving anything on the table, that we're not leaving any loose ends out there, that would potentially result in a dis- liability towards the city. But I can't say it's risk-free. Councilmember Xandra talked about the credit piece, I mean, there are, there are risks to the deal, so.
What would happen if we approve this today, and we get to future agenda items, later in our agenda, and someone asks to have an item put on the agenda for next meeting, that says, we are not going to approve the future agreements, and we're not going to agree to pay the $850,000 for the restructuring agreement?
That's maybe a two-part question. On the parliamentary piece, I would defer to Ms. Chase, Deputy City Attorney. On the other side, the question is, you know, what would that effect have on the agreement? And that would probably be the type of thing that, you know, I'd probably be examining that within the context of an attorney-client privileged document, because the question would be, you know, would that give rise to litigation? What would the potential claims be? What would the potential defenses be? All that sort of thing, which, you know, I, I'm not prepared to really speak to that today, at the podium, other than to say that, yeah, there's potential risk out there, but I can't speak to the merits of what that risk is.
Any further discussion?
And so, again, back to discussion, to me, the easiest thing to do here is to continue this item. I really, I don't think the new council, as much as they're willing to, I don't think they really want to deal with this today. I, I thought that their hope was that this would be continued, and they could get their arms around it. Jonathan basically just said that approving this could put the city at risk, if we don't approve those other agreements. I don't know that the new council's completely ready to approve those other agreements. I think, to me, there's, I mean, I agree with you, Dave, where do you say no? But there's a lot more that these guys have to address, that is not, that, that they're not ready to, and-
I'm, I'm sorry, I just didn't see the election that nominated you their spokesman. I'm just curious. Do you have a waiver from them? How do we know that they've said that?
Well, let's do this, Mr. Mayor, because I would like, yeah, I know Mr. Guston has some other commitments, too. Just quickly to Dwight's point, we have that risk today, because we approved, we approved the support agreement, and the settlement agreement, this is the last, we want the personal guarantee.
Right.
So, I've made the motion to approve the personal guarantee, it's been seconded, I'd like the call for the question. Let's get these new members on board, and deal with the business of the day, which is, it shouldn't be as awkward as we are having today. Let's just move on.
And I'm gonna, I am going to support the motion.
Okay, that's good.
So that I can have this discussion with the new council members, and if they want me to bring up a reconsideration, I can do that.
Okay. We'll call for the vote. Ms. Xandra?
And I will do the same thing, this needs to- This needs to have full consideration by the new council, and if it requires me, who has been against this deal, changing my vote in the affirmative so that I can request a reconsideration, I will do that, in order to secure the new council's opportunity to voice in.
Good. Any other discussion? Yes?
I guess I'm just going to find it odd, Mr. Mayor, that this thing, which might cost the taxpayers a million dollars a year, possibly, we all want to put it off to people who just don't like the deal in the first place. But we just struck a deal that cost the taxpayers a million dollars a year last week for waste management, and that didn't have to be brought on. We all voted to increase property taxes a few months ago, and that.
Not all of us.
So it's interesting that the people, just because you don't like the deal, that's fine, but don't hide behind the fact that the new people have to see it. That's all. Just say you're not in favor of it. I'm fine with that.
Okay. Well, we're gonna, we're gonna bring this back under control a little bit here. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no.
No.
Show the vote for three.
No, six one.
No, six one.
Excuse me, excuse me, y'all voted, so sell the vote.
And I won't be back, so I voted no, Ms. Mayor.
Show the vote, six one, I'm sorry. Six one. All right. Now let's go to item C5. One, I will apologize to everybody for starting the meeting late, but I was waiting for somebody to get here and get some clarification. I'm sorry we dragged this out. I was hoping we'd have the new members sworn in by now, but we'll get by this one here at you, and we will get them sworn in and everything, and I really appreciate everybody being here and your patience. All right. Item C5, Mr. Frankovich.
Why don't I go first?
You, well, you didn't raise your hand, but go ahead.
Robert Chisel, Finance Director. Before you, is a memo detailing some information on the Summit Sierra bond ordinance and current agreement we have with the Reno, it's actually with Reno Real Estate Company. We have met with the representatives from RRC and have come up with several potential options and elements to restructure the current ordinance and current agreement to the satisfaction of RRC. In there, there is four options. One of the options is to reset the base from the current 2005, that has a base of $42 million sales tax, to a base of $31 million. To give you a little history, currently, right now, because the current agreement required a 2% escalation in sales tax, we have not been making any payments to RRC for a number of years. In fact, only two payments were made to RRC early on for about $430,000. And at this time, per the current agreement, current ordinance, we do not have to make any payments. So if we reset the base, that would allow the first trigger, which would allow for payments to be made to RRC. If we lowered it to the $31 million base and assumed a 2% to 3% sales tax increase, we would pay them approximately $450,000 for this year and next year. Another item we identified was a potential trigger or eligibility test to the ordinance requiring sales tax growth for the property is greater than or equal to the county-wide sales tax growth prior to making any payments. Another element is to extend the term of the bond from 2020, where it is currently set to expire, to December 2037. Based on any projections that we have, it is unlikely that the $10 million payments would be made to RRC to make the full payment of the bonds prior to the expiration. And once the current agreement and ordinance expires, we would be under no obligation to make any payments to RRC. The fourth item we discussed was to remove the requirement for maintaining the retail mix criteria in the agreement. RRC had mentioned concerns about being able to maintain that mixture as we move forward into future years. So we're seeking council direction, and Mr. Frankovich may have something to say.
Mr. Frankovich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is John Frankovich. I represent Bayer Properties, the owners and developers of the Summit Sierra Mall. One of the principals, Mr. Silverstein, is with me today. On a personal matter, I would like to thank all of the departing members of the council for their service to Reno under any measure. I think it's been an amazing run, and there's a lot of things that you've accomplished that I think you and the city can be proud of for a long time to come. But as a preliminary matter, Mr. Mayor, and before I proceed, I have a presentation on this. We were here last week, you asked us to meet with staff, come back, and I was anticipating you'd take action on it, and we're prepared to do that. We did meet with staff, and it's consistent with what Mr. Chisel presented. But based on your discussion here on the last item, we recognize that this matter, if you approve it today, will still take action by the new council. They would have to pass an ordinance to amend the bond. We believe it's appropriate for this council to make the decision today for a couple reasons. One, I think the new council will honor the commitments of this council, and two, it was this council that entered into the agreement in the first place, so we thought it was appropriate for this council to take action. But before I proceed, I don't want to waste anybody's time in going through a presentation that's going to take more than, than three minutes, if the pleasure of the council is that they're going to defer this to the new council. So, as a preliminary matter, I at least ask that be addressed, so we're not wasting your time and anybody else's time.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think it's, from my standpoint, it's the same argument. I mean, they're going to have to approve the ordinances. I, I think it'd be appropriate for them to, to be the ones, kind of, given the guidance. Same arguments I had on the, the last item, really, so.
This would be, this would be, just recommend to staff work with them and come up with some stuff?
I think they've already done that to some degree, Mr. Mayor. I think it's, it's, they want, he wants direction, he wants us to give staff direction on how to put the ordinance together.
No, well, if I may, Mr. Mayor, we have an, actually, agreement that we have before you that we would like to get approved. The council still has to, the new council still has to take action to amend the bond ordinance, hopefully, well, it should be consistent with the agreement that hopefully you approved today. That's where we are. Right. Ms. Ralston.
Yeah, and, Mr. Mayor, and I said this last meeting, I, I think there's quite a few issues with this, and I, I think it's the redistribution. I think staff needs time to analyze. If you look at, actually, I was shopping at the Summit Sierra last night, and happened to be in Ann Taylor, and I asked them the question, I said, you know, are you guys still in Meadowwood? Well, no, they closed the shop at Meadowwood to move to Summit Sierra. So I think it begs the question about retail saturation, where we have to go. If you look at Legends, again, if you look at Legends in Meadowwood, and, and I do believe our, our previous finance director, that's why they put this in the agreement, was that 2%, to actually make sure that there was a growth in sales tax revenue, that you weren't just taking sales tax from one location to another location. I'm sorry, Mr. Frankovich, I know you disagree with me on this, but if you look at the existing tenants in the staff report, a lot of them are duplicated over at Legends and over at Meadowwood. So I would have the same concerns that I did about baseball, Mr. Mayor. I mean, what's next? Is Cabela's going to be in line down here, asking for some type of, of, you know, restructure to their agreement? At what point does this stop? And so, you know, I'll do what the, the members who are still standing want to do here, and let the previous, or the next council make this decision, because it's going to have, again, an impact to the general fund under the scenario if you reset the base. So I would be in favor, I, I'm not in favor of changing the base rate, but if, if the council wants to continue it, so the next council can look at it, I would, I would be in favor of that motion, so.
Mr. Azzi, you have anything?
No, sir.
Yeah, just briefly for staff, what, what's the calculation if, have you reviewed this agreement and calculated what the fiscal impact would be?
Robert Chisel, again, starting next year, it'd be about $450,000 to $500,000 a year.
Because we're splitting it, right?
Because we're splitting it.
Okay.
And currently, we're not paying any, so that would be the impact to the general fund.
Okay, and that would be for the fiscal year starting July 1st, 2013?
Correct.
Okay.
The payment would be in December of 2013 for this year.
Well, I have, do you make comments? Because you had brought this forward, Sharon. The, just a couple quick comments, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I'm supportive of this, because, as you recall, this developer came to us, they brought a whole host of new tenants. We knew there was a bunch of sales tax being exported that we could capture here, and what the developer said, look, I'll use the $10 million to do public improvements that would otherwise not have been made but for this transaction. So it's site-specific, all we're doing is sharing sales tax that wouldn't otherwise be in this community, and it's to reimburse the developer for public improvements. And he, he's done everything we've asked him to do, including bringing all those new tenants, Banana Republic, the list was long, that we required this individual to do in order for them to bring that shopping experience here, again, that would otherwise be exported outside the community. So I'm not so sure I would do it for this next fiscal year. I would, I would push it out, but for the reasons that were stated, I think we should try to resolve this, and the ordinance can come back to the council. It's just another loose end with a lot of history here. The new council's going to have a lot on their plate. They don't need to deal with these lingering issues, so I'm, I'm prepared to move forward. And then have the first payment due July, December of '14 instead of '13.
Ms. Zadger.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would reiterate that this is a different deal than Cabela's had. That was a Star Bonds deal, which is structured somewhat differently than this, this one was. This was not a Star Bonds deal. And again, they did do everything that, that they committed to, and the stores that came in at Legends were after this development was completed. So that's, that's a hard one for me to, to criticize. And I thought we structured this, that this, the stores that did relocate, if they were in Meadowwood and went out there, that was excluded from the calculation. Is that right?
That does not count against the retail mix. We're still, we're still obligated to have over 60% of the project, and with new stores, not otherwise in the community.
Right, right. So I believe that this deserves our consideration, absolutely, but similarly to the discussion that we had on the prior agenda item, it's something that the, the new council is going to have to approve in the budget cycle, and they should have the opportunity for this one as well.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, it sounds to me like the council wants to proceed with this, and I do have a presentation, if you'd like to hear it, although I, it's awkward at this point in time, but.
I'll have your presentation.
Okay, thank you, you asked for it.
We asked how long it is. We didn't ask you to do it, we asked how long.
Okay, less than 10 minutes.
Less than 10 minutes? I'd rather, we put everybody here that came in to sw, to see the swearing-in ceremony, so I'm going to see if I can expedite it off the table first. Ms. Zadger, you want to make a motion?
Again, I support a restructure of, of this, this deal, but I do believe that it needs to be with the prior council, or the, excuse me, the new council's involvement. I think it was critical for them to hear from this council, who was involved in this deal from the get-go, to hear the, the comments and the interpretation, but I would move to continue.
Motion is second for continuance.
Yeah, I'm not, just briefly, I'm not going to support the motion, Mr. Mayor. We, we know about the facts of this case, and we can deal with it accordingly.
Anybody else? A call for the, a call for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no.
No.
Show the motion. What'd you do?
Six one. Oh, five one.
Five one, for continuance. Okay.
We saved the time of everybody, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
And, and actually, just tell the new members, welcome to the process.
All right, folks, here we go. We finally got to where 90% of the people in this room really want to be, and that's to canvass the votes. You're up.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, you have the statement of vote in front of you, and it's recommended that you certify the results of the November 6, 2012 general election.
All right.
I heard there's anomalies in precinct 2036, Mr. Mayor, so I don't know if we can really do this. I'll move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, good. I have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we have a healthy judge in here, and we have a crippled judge in here today. What seems to be the problem? Did the other judge leave? No, there he is, he's robed over, I'm sorry, sir, I didn't see you.
I can move this without damaging it. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and members of the council. Mr. Mayor, I won't invoke my powers of persuasion with the Almighty, but I am very glad to see that you are here. I have the, the honor of swearing in the new members of council, and a new judge, and I've always, I've done this a number of times. I know we're behind, but we're behind. I also want to thank all those who ran and worked hard, who maybe didn't win this time, but had good ideas, and I hope that they continue to be part of our community and keep giving good ideas to the community, because without them, we don't have the city that we have. The first oath I have is for Jenny Breckus. Yes.
I just wanted everybody to know that if you have people who want to take pictures or something, feel free to wander around and take, and take pictures.
I thought they almost did.
Could do whatever you guys want to do.
I just got the order, I got the list from the clerk, so whichever order you want.
We made a great.
All right.
All right, step up, now's your chance. Come on. Can't be bashful now, you're elected.
This is actually your oath, and after we're done, you'll need to sign that with the clerk. If you have your family members, if you'd like to take just a moment to introduce anybody that's here.
This is my son, Ryan, and my husband, Brad.
If you'd raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Neil Majorgen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
The Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
And the charter and ordinances of the City of Reno.
And the charter and ordinances of the City of Reno.
Against all enemies, whether domestic or foreign.
Against all enemies, domestic or foreign.
And that I will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty to the same.
And I will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty to the same.
You have a copy. I will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty to the same.
I will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty to the same.
Any ordinance, resolution, or law of any state notwithstanding.
Any.
Ordinance, resolution, or law of any state notwithstanding.
Of any state.
And that I am not under any direct or indirect obligation.
And that I am not under any direct or indirect obligation.
To vote for, appoint, or elect.
To vote for, appoint, or elect.
Any person to any office, position, or employment.
To any person, office, or position, or employment.
In the City of Reno government.
In the City of Reno government.
And I will well and faithfully perform.
And I will well and faithfully perform.
All the duties of the office of the ward, that you're elected.
All the duties of the office of Ward Five.
On which I'm about to enter, so help me God.
On which I'm about to enter, so help me.
Councilman, congratulations. Rebecca, Miss Goss? Okay. If you'd like to come forward and introduce your family, your friends, and whoever else is here. That's for you, if you follow along. Who'd like to introduce your family?
This is my daughter, Eliana Ornelis, and my husband, Armando Ornelis.
Good morning. If you'd raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Jenny Breckus.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States. The Constitution and government of the United States.
Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Reno.
And the charter and the ordinances of the city of Reno.
Against all enemies, whether domestic or foreign.
Against all enemies, whether domestic or foreign.
And I will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty to the same.
And that I will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty to this town.
Any ordinance, resolution, or law of any state.
Any ordinance, resolution, or law of any state.
Notwithstanding.
Notwithstanding.
And that I am not under any direct or indirect obligation.
And that I am not under any direct or indirect obligation.
To vote for, appoint, or elect.
To vote for, appoint, or elect.
Any person to any office.
Any person to any office.
Position or employment.
Position or employment.
In the city of Reno government.
In the city of Reno government.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
All the duties of the office of councilmen from Ward.
All the duties of the office of the councilman -- councilmember of Ward One.
On which I'm about to enter, so help me God.
Of which I'm about to enter, so help me God.
Congratulations, councilman. Next on the -- the order I have would be Oscar Delgado. Good afternoon, sir. After we're done, you will need to have a sign with the city clerk. If you'd like to introduce whoever.
I have you with me, my wife, Rita, and my mother, my sister-in-law.
You're all very welcome here, and that you can use to follow along if you wish or if you need to. If you've raised your right hand, sir. I state your name.
I, Oscar Delgado.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
Support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Reno.
Charter and ordinances of the state of Reno.
Against all enemies, whether domestic or foreign.
Against all enemies, whether domestic or foreign.
And I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
Allegiance and loyalty to the same.
Allegiance and loyalty to the same.
Any ordinance, resolution, or law of any state.
Any ordinance, resolution, or law of any state.
Notwithstanding.
Notwithstanding.
And that I am not under any direct or indirect obligation.
And that I am not under any direct or indirect obligation.
To vote for, appoint, or elect.
To vote for, appoint, or elect.
Any person to any office.
Any person to any office.
Position or employment in the city of Reno government.
Position or employment in the city of Reno.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
All the duties of the office of councilman from Ward.
All the duties in office of the city council board.
On which is your word?
Ward Three.
Ward Three. On which I'm about to enter, so help me God.
On which I'm about to enter, so help me God.
Congratulations, councilman. Good afternoon. If you'd like to introduce your guests.
I do those too, but this is not a wedding.
Who do you have with you today?
This is my sister, Amanda, and we're incredibly close, and she's my biggest.
I'm glad. This is your actual official oath. You will need to sign it with the city clerk afterwards. And if you'd raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Hillary Sheehy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
The Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Reno.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Reno.
And I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty to the same. I will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty to the same.
Any ordinance, resolution, or law of any state notwithstanding.
Any ordinance, resolution, or law of any state notwithstanding.
And that I am not under any direct or indirect obligation.
And that I am not under any direct or indirect obligation.
To vote for, appoint, or elect.
To vote for, appoint, or elect.
Any person to any office.
Any person to any office.
Position or employment in the city of Reno government.
Position or employment in the city of Reno government.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
All the duties of the office of.
All the duties of the office of.
Your name, your office is on your slip.
Of the city council, large.
Okay. On which I'm about to enter, so help me God.
On which I am about to enter, so help me God.
Councilman, thank you. This last one, I would like to preface slightly. William Gardner. I know he's around somewhere. Judge Gardner is actually administrative judge this year, would normally do this duty. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to since he had to stand for reelection, and he asked me as the senior judge to follow him, so I will do it.
I'd like to bring in my parents, Bob and Joan Gardner, and my judicial staff, Karen, Lisa, and our court administrator, Cass.
Everybody's gathered around? If you'd raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, William Gardner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
The Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Reno.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Reno.
Against all enemies, whether domestic or foreign.
Against all enemies, whether domestic or foreign.
And I will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty to the same.
And that I will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty to the same.
Any ordinance, resolution, or law of any state notwithstanding.
Any ordinance, resolution, or law of any state notwithstanding.
And that I am not under any direct or indirect obligation.
And that I am not under any direct or indirect obligation.
To vote for, appoint, or elect.
To vote for, appoint, or elect.
Any person to any office, position, or employment.
Any person to any office, position, or employment.
In the city of Reno government.
In the city of Reno government.
And I will well and faithfully perform.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
All the duties of the office of Judge's Department Two.
All of the duties of the office of Reno Municipal Judge Department Two.
On which I'm about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
So help me God. Congratulations, Jim. Thanks again to the council members who are leaving, and welcome those that are coming. Thank you.
Please. Certainly. Sheehy, Breckus, Zadra.
Here.
Delgado.
Here.
Dorch, Jardong.
Here.
Kachal.
Boo. I mean, excuse me, I'm here. That's the problem, these cowbells, it just jumps in there. Go to item G, election of Vice Mayor of Reno City Council, Mr. Dorch.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll nominate Sharon Zadra.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Uh, we got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Proclamation's none. Now we go down to -- we go down to -- let's move to item P1, Board Appointments and Board and Commission Appointments.
And, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I just kinda put together a list of possibilities. I think I've gotten a copy of it to everyone. And, I mean, if everyone's okay with it, I'd move to make the appointments on the list, and I've given a copy of this to the clerk.
But have you seen it? Oscar, have you?
I have seen it, yes.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor, I have not had a chance to look at that. I've received so much paper coming in here today. I do have a few points I'd like to make. First of all.
Sure. Oh, you need to turn your mic on. I'm sorry.
Not in -- I'm sorry. Last week, the outgoing council acted on this item, is my understanding. Do you have a recollection of that?
Just the RTC is the only one they acted on.
Okay. I believe that it is a privilege of this body to decide who sits on the RTC for them going next year. I would like to see that item re-brought back, because it's an important body. It's one of the most important ones, you know, with the issues ahead and the finances involved that impact our regional forms. So I'd like to have this body take their jurisdiction to make that appointment. Another point I have is, I saw on the agenda last week that there was a resolution to delete or remove some of the bodies. I have not been provided a copy of that resolution. Were any of those on this list? Is this list up to date?
It is.
I just asked the clerk that question when I handed her the sheet, so I don't.
Um, the sheet that. Excuse me. The sheet that Dwight provided me does have some of the old committees that have been sunsetted. However, I'm not seeing where any of the appointments that he has on here have the new council members on them. But I can provide you that resolution that sunsetted those committees, Jenny.
Well, Mr. Mayor, in light of the fact.
Cadet, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Can we get a second for discussion since?
Yes. Mr. -- okay, now we're going into discussion. Motion's second. I'm sorry. Cadet, is she here? Okay. Would you go through this thing?
She -- I don't think I've given her a copy. Did I give you a copy? I didn't give you.
Cadet, so I think what we're looking for is the boards and commissions that were sunset.
Oh.
If you could go through those, I think that's what.
And just for the record, Jenny, the RTC is on this. It's able to be discussed on this. This is all of our boards and commissions. So, I mean, that can all -- all of them can be discussed during this agenda item.
Procedurally, would we have to then rescind that appointment? Are we agendaize to do that?
I think we can appoint anytime we want, change members, as long as it's agendaized. Correct, Tracy?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. As a general proposition, that is correct, but I think midterm, once you appoint someone to certain terms, if they're statutorily, you may not be able to alter that, and I haven't looked.
Unless they step down.
Yes, yes, correct. But I haven't looked at the RTC, whether -- how that NRS goes, or.
Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
For the record, Cadet Smatievich, Assistant City Manager. And just a little background for the new council members. The item that was brought forward last week was a resolution that was actually following up on action, direction that the council had given all the way back to 2010. And in reviewing the records, we found that erroneously, staff had failed to bring the resolution forward to implement the direction of the council all the way back to 2010, that certain of these boards and subcommittees that were no longer necessary if the project had been completed, if the program that they were overseeing was no longer in place, that we were retiring those. But I'm happy to go down the list, and I'll try and go in the -- I think it's in the same order as the list that you have. And so the first one that you would see would be the Subcommittee for the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, and that committee was retired with the action last week. Forgive me.
So was the train trade.
The Affordable Housing Task Force was also retired with the action last week. The Housing Task Force that Councilwoman Spurazza was prior appointed to, that was retired last week. There is another Board and Commission listed underneath that, the IPAC, and that, I believe that the work has been completed on as well, but it was.
I think we retired that one about five years ago.
And councilwoman, I think that just formally, the action to -- by resolution to retire it has never happened, so that may be one to bring back. Continuing on, the Retract Stakeholder Partnering Board, that was retired by your action last And I believe that is the bulk of those, or that's the remainder of those that are listed on this spreadsheet that were retired. There were some others. The Joint Fire Advisory Board, as an example, which you took formal action on, the council took formal action on, but was retired in effect when the inter-local agreement for the consolidated fire departments was ended, things of that nature.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm not quite sure how we're gonna proceed on this. You know, there's new information, and I know Dwight's passed something around, and I haven't had a chance to look at that. There are a lot of boards here. There's a new majority coming on. I'd like to move that we defer this motion. I'm sorry, what's the motion on the floor?
I have a motion second already on the floor.
I don't have a copy of that list. I have not had a chance to look at it, so I will not be able to support that motion.
Okay.
I did provide a list earlier today.
Okay. All right, I have a motion second into discussion.
And I think it's important that we move forward. We can always change these.
Yep.
But I think it's important that we move forward. There's some boards that are -- that have meetings coming up that -- before our next meeting.
Right.
That we need representation on. So, I mean, I think if there's changes that we need to make at any time, we can always make the changes.
Yes, go ahead.
What is the procedure for changing or modifying these on a forward basis? Is it annual? Is it whenever the next meeting we want? Does it?
I think we've usually done it along with election cycles, but I don't think we're required to. I mean, I think we can -- I think we can make changes. We have to agendaize it and make a change.
It's usually been an annual thing. Somebody's appointed to the committee.
And we've done it midterm before.
For consistency and everything.
Yeah.
And the only thing on RTC and stuff like that, unless the two members wanna resign or stuff like that, or bring it up for consideration, or whatever.
Do you want to give us a copy of it? Mr. Mayor, I'd like to discuss each of these individually, if we may, during discussion. So Dwight, Art Town is Hillary?
Correct.
Is the way you're looking at that? And then the mayor's name remains on Capitol Project Surcharge Advisory Subcommittee, and that's you as well. And then Sharon also. The CAC Transitional Governing Board, is that still in operation?
Community Assistant, yes.
That Transitional Board is still in operation?
Yes.
And you're sitting on that, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Debt Management Commission is Naoma. District Board of Health is Sharon. EDON is Sharon and Oscar.
Yeah, I actually think there's only one seat there. Is that correct, Mayor?
Okay. So there's only one seat. So, you know, we've got a motion for something that won't work here, then. How are we gonna take care of that?
That's -- I think the intent there was to keep Sharon there.
And that's something that has just been in effect for about five months, six months, maybe.
And Hillary, you need to agree to that as a second. That's just a correction on the motion.
Okay. So continuing on, the Human Services Contortion Member, that's showing us Jessica. She's not with us anymore. Was there gonna be a name on that one? Was there going to be a name on that one?
How did we miss that one, Sharon?
I believe that's one that Cadence just said was sunsetted.
No, that's not sunsetted. Mayor, we have a real flawed document before us. Um, I, I again am having a difficulty supporting this motion. Okay, let's continue rolling now, though. Uh, the Intergovernmental Subcommittee for Shared Services, that would continue to be the mayor and Ms. Shivi. It's just, sorry, the print is so small here.
It is.
Let's see, there's three on that committee, then? Okay. Oversight Panel for School Facilities, that still exists, that would be Hillary. Oh, there's my name, okay. That's the Oversight Panel for School Facilities, that is still in, in existence? Okay, okay. Regional Governing Board, the mayor. Regional Governing Board, Oscar. Regional Governing Board, Jenny. Why is there a vice chair by one of the Regional Planning Governing Boards? How, how does that work out? Because I thought that body creates their own leadership there.
I think, I think it's because he's currently the vice chair, they're going to have to have another-
Okay, so that, so it's really just a membership thing, it's not, okay, gotcha. Dwight will remain on. RTC? I'm sorry, would you, okay, okay, RTC. Uh, Housing Authority would be Oscar. So we have two seats on the Reno Sparks Convention and Visitors Authority. And those are both Dwight and both Sharon. Mayor, as a member, as a point of, I, I believe that with two members who have two years left, where we have committees with new people on, I think they should be given a shot to serve one new person and one older person with the new majority coming on. I'd just like to make that point. I think that is, is very fair to help bring on the new people and give them exposures to other items. The Joint Sewer Committee member, we don't have a member, we have Mr. Hasch up by that again, so we've got another air in this document. That is the Reno Sparks Joint Sewer Committee, not seeing a name by that one. Yeah. So we'll need someone to ma- Yeah, okay, well-
And that was a question I asked the clerk. I said, are there any that I'm missing that haven't been, that need to be filled today that are not, that are not taken care of on this sheet? And she was looking through that to find out, so she could give that to us. Basically, what I'm asking for approval of is, is what we've got in front of us, the assignments that are dedicated on here. And then if there's additional ones, the clerk was going to look at the list and see if there were others that needed to be taken care of right away, so.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just, you know, running through this because, uh, I want to know what we're voting on. And I want to know what we're voting on is, is accurate. Okay, Sierra Arts member, that would be me. Mr. Mayor, may I ask, do you know if we have a contractual relationship with Sierra Arts Foundation? They're a nonprofit, do we give, do we have a- Okay. I'm uncomfortable serving on a board of directors for a nonprofit for which we have a contractual relationship. That's just- Give them money. Okay, okay, but you know, you sit on a board of directors of a nonprofit, you're sitting in a fiduciary capacity. And I just, for me, I have discomfort sitting on a board of directors, so I-
Art Town's the same way, so is Edon the same way, and, and those things, and, and we've-
She doesn't want to say it.
Well, the ten years I've been here.
And I understand, that's just not a way that I, you know, want to separate the nonprofit from the fiduciary responsibility of the contracting authority of the city. Stadium Authority would be Oscar. Stadium Authority would be Naoma. And is that enacted? That, that body's in existence and enacted? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Subcommittee for the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, we still have quite a bit of NSP money to spend at the city. I'm wondering why that was disbanded? What was the thinking behind that, do we know?
Was this, was this the first one? The first NSP?
Yes, Councilman George, for the record, Cadence Smatievich, this was the Subcommittee for the first NSP program, which was the city of Reno. My understanding is that all of these subsequent grants went to the Reno Housing Authority, and so it would be their board that would need to take that action.
I'm not entirely certain that's true, that it all went to the Reno Housing Authority. The city may have granted it to the, and it, to their, but, okay, right, but we sunsetted that one. Uh, Trekkie Meadows Tourism Facility member, that would remain. Trekkie Meadows Tourism Facility, okay. Oh, we don't have, now, here's another one we've got an issue with. Dave on the Trekkie Meadows Tourism Facility Stakeholders Member. How are we going to correct that one?
Somebody want some there?
Yeah.
Okay. Is someone keeping track of the decisions we have to make to perfect this? Okay, okay. And Pierre's on there, too. Naoma's going, going to be on Tamwah. Sharon will stay on Tamwah as the vice chair. The Flood Project, the mayor. The Flood Project, Oscar. Western Regional Commission, we need to focus on that one, too. Again, the mayor is on that, so we got that one, okay. The alternate members, we've got an air there, too, and that is an important body, so we do need to assign someone there. The alternate member for the Human Services Consortium. Uh, the Planning and Building Enterprise Fund, that would remain Sharon. We've got Dan as an alternate, we need an alternate there. Okay. Regional Planning Government, but got Sharon, got Jessica on that, too.
And, and the rationale behind leaving the alternates office, I've really, that was one that we don't have to fill today. So I thought it'd give you guys a chance to, to kind of figure out where you're at. And one of the things we've talked about in the past is having all of us be alternate members, just in case someone can't make it, or, and an alternate can't make it. I mean, so we've had those discussions, too. I really thought that was more of a discussion we could have, kind of as a group, that, you know, and, and figure that out. But it wasn't something that was critical to today's-
Okay, okay. So basically, your proposal, then, is just for the ones that you have identified?
Yeah, and if we want to fill in the ones that you've, that you've picked up on, I mean, we can fill those in. I mean, obviously, if you don't want to be on the Sierra Arts Foundation, we could put someone else on that, see who wants it. Hillary?
Sure.
So we just put Hillary there.
Okay.
And then the other ones that you've identified, I mean, we can fill in those blanks, too.
Yeah.
I mean, and that's why I asked the clerk, if there was any that I missed that were critical to be filled right away, we could go ahead and fill those in.
Okay, so no need to go down the liaisons?
No.
Well, I, um, you know, I feel that I was not consulted in this and asked, and I do have an interest in some of these other bodies, Mayor, so I will not be supporting the motion.
So do you want to fill in the ones that she identified? Um, and Lynette, are there, these, the ones that I've identified, it looks like there's three. The Reno Sparks, um, Joint Sewer Coordinating Committee, anybody interested in that?
Reno, sir.
Here comes Susan. Susan Ballroth, Deputy City Attorney. The Joint Coordinating Committee for the Treatment Plant was created probably in the seventies to manage Reno and Sparks jointly on the, the Treatment Plant, which treats reclaimed water. And we meet generally every, every two months, on the first Wednesday of the month at 10:00 in the morning, except when it conflicts with the city council meeting, and then we would switch that Wednesday approximately to our meeting, and we meet out at the Treatment Plant, which is on Clean Water Way. And, um, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay.
Sorry, get used to the procedures here.
So we can put Naoma on that one?
Yeah.
Um, Trekkie Meadows Tourism Facility, is that the next one? Yeah. Trekkie Meadows Tourism Facility? Anybody have an interest in that? I don't even know when, how often do they meet, Bob? They haven't met in ages.
They, they haven't met, they haven't met, it's kind of dormant right now.
Is there a reason to keep that one? Does anyone know? Someone, someone want to go on, why we've tried to figure it out? I mean, it hasn't met in a while. We could, we could even leave it open for now. Uh, Lynette? Maybe we can address that and see if we even need to keep it?
I think you're fine leaving it open for now.
Yeah. Western Regional Water Commission? Naoma? Okay. So I'll amend my motion to include those changes, if Hillary will amend her second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Tell you to turn on the mic, I better turn my own on. I have a motion, second, I have it, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Jenny-
Excuse me.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So are you okay, I mean?
I'm not supporting this motion, I will be voting negative on this.
Okay. Because I want to make sure that everyone understands these boards and commissions and what we're signing up for. I think that this is really important, I still think it's a very vague area, and make sure everyone sort of, you know, sure, okay. As long as we, you know, you understand that?
Yep.
Jenny? Okay.
I, I am not pleased when one member of the council decides and prepares a document with, and assigns seats. I am not comfortable with that sort of process. I think the give and take at the table of people's interest is the appropriate and transparent way to operate.
Okay. Oscar?
Uh, did somebody fill the Human Services Consortium?
It's my understanding that the city withdrew from the consortium back in 2011, so there's not a need right now.
That was an open, okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Any changes? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those that oppose, no?
No.
Show the vote, six, one. All right. All right, now we're back to the consent agenda. Item J1. Does anybody have one of these items you want to pull for discussion? Then the chair will entertain a motion for approval.
Move to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye? Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, do you want a motion to reconsider item C4 now?
We can do it whenever. C4, C- So why would, let's go through this and then we'll do that.
Do that, okay, that's fine.
Public hearing? Madam Secretary, all the notices have been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, for the record, proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
Okay. Any, anybody need a staff report or discussion? Chair will entertain a motion? Your microphone, please.
Motion to accept, accept staff report.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye? Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Ordinance adoption, none? Resolution, item M1.
Resolution number 7791. Resolution accepting streets Gee Cuddy Ranch, Unit 6, portions are Suvino Drive, Frazzi Drive, Rivoli Drive, and Balsano Drive.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Item M2, Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given, no correspondence received.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, this has a procedure for sale of city-owned property associated with it. Do you have a-
Right, I'm going to have the manager read the items we need to have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to Resolution 7776, council adopted on October 24th, 2012. This is the time and place set for the public auction and possible acceptance of the highest bid for city-owned property APN 011-501-06 and 011-501-07, located at 252 and 262 East Liberty Street, which is currently improved as a parking lot. The minimum bid is the highest appraised value of the property, which is $185,000, and the purchase must be made in cash or not less than 25% down with deferred payments, deferred payments over a period of not more than 10 years, secured by a mortgage or deed of trust bearing such interests. Uh, we will first open any sealed bids and then call for oral bids. An oral bid must, must exceed a written bid by 5% to be accepted. Anyone wishing to make an oral bid must sign in with the city clerk. Your name will be called to come to the podium to make your oral, oral bid at the appropriate time. The second item on here is the opening of the sealed bid. Council has received one sealed bid submitted to the clerk by the deadline of November 13th, 2012, um, at 3:00 PM. I'm assuming that is the, the document that we have here. Mr. Mayor, if you want to-
Mayor, is there a discussion on this item among, okay, okay. I just, because it looks like you're opening a bid and I want to, you know, okay. Oh, the envelope, okay.
Envelope, please.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, for the record, the city reserves the right to reject all bids in its discretion as well in this process.
This letter is from Specialty Health, Lori Miles. Bid Liberty Street Parking Lots 011-501-06 and 011-501-07, adjacent to 330 East Liberty Street, Reno, Nevada, 89501. This letter is to be considered a formal bid to purchase the city of Reno's Liberty Street Parking Lot adjacent to 330 East Liberty Street. Specialty Health wishes to bid $186,500 for the parking lot referenced above and is prepared to pay cash at the close of bid. Signed Jacqueline Cox, President and CEO of Specialty Health. Miss Clerk, has anyone, uh, signed in or made an oral bid?
No, Mr. Mayor, no one has.
Okay. All right, having invited sealed bids and called for an oral bid for the sale of this property, the public auction is closed. Now we will go for some discussion, or? Yes?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and I recognize this is a process that's been in place, the idea to dispose of this property. But my experience in city disposing of property is, it's a very, it's very rare that the city has property and surplus, and, and the city is, is different than a typical landowner when they think about what to do with property. I, I have two concerns, primarily, one is, this property is a very intense zoning district, and we could see through our actions, this property going to this person or another entity for a use that may not be something that we would like to see on that property. I also think that we have policy objectives, and actually even state mandate, to think about how the city can put some skin in the game into their housing and affordable housing programs. This would, the state annually asks cities what they've done to support housing, and we always say, we're supporting housing through our use of federal funds. But a project like this could be very signature in terms of us leveraging our federal dollars for a housing project that may be affordable, maybe mixed, could have different components. I think it's a very visible lot, and I think we have a policy basis in, in our objectives for affordable housing and revitalizing the urban core that we could be a part of on this. So I would like to withhold the acceptance of the bid, and that would be, I'll wait for others, I won't make a motion.
Ms. Zadra?
Could we have staff? Yeah, probably, you're right. We went through a review with CB for all of our properties. Could you kind of give a, a brief history of that and how that played into this recommendation?
Steve Hardisty, Public Works. We did have a lot of, all of our properties were reviewed by CB Richard Ellis back when they did the Strategic Plan and everything like that. And the recommendation from them was that some surplus properties, including these two, could be put up for sale. And we brought that to council at one point to get your permission on a resolution, and you sent it back to us and said, look, to see if you could find additional buyers or even a lease, someone that would lease the property. Um, and there wasn't any, any other takers or any interest at all at that point. So then we brought it back to council on, um, the 24th of October with a resolution to commit, and at that point, we started the process all over again. So, and we're back before you now, so.
Thank you.
Okay. I have somebody that wishes to speak on this, item 2.1. Lance Van Littigraft?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Lance Van Littigraft, resident at 520, 565 West Royal. I observe that we now have a majority of councilwomen and a minority of councilmen.
Yes, sir.
How does it feel, Mr. Mayor, to be the minority?
Feels great, feels great.
Feels great. I'm here because I've reviewed this sale, I'm in favor of the idea of selling off surplus property, and I would, today- Today, we had new council members take their oath that they will abide by state laws and apply them in exercising their duties. So, I have for you a copy of... If that little... How does that work?
She'll bring it up.
Under Nevada Revised Statute 286, a city may accept as otherwise provided, sell, convey, and dispose of real property for the common benefit. That would be for the benefit of the community citizens of Reno. You may reconvey land under 268-050 if you determine that maintenance of the property is unnecessarily burdensome or reconveyance is in the best interest of the city. Specifically for this piece of property to go at auction, 268-061A says, "If you have determined by resolution that the sale of real property will be in the best interest of the city, you may go forward." I have some other statutes cited here that also cite the same, but it's all about the determination that it's best for the city to dispose of the property. I reviewed the staff report and it says that this is surplus property, which doesn't offer you much help on whether it's in the best interests to sell it. And I liked your comments that it might be suitable for another purpose. But after viewing the tape of October 25, Councilman Seprazza... Pardon me. Councilman Huscheff said, "This will put the property back on our tax rolls and therefore it would benefit the city." So, that being the only fact, it appears that, you know, sale of the property would be appropriate since it would be in the best interest of the city to get it back on the tax rolls. But so far, there hasn't been that necessary finding. I mention this because in the future, it will come before you to ask you to look at a piece of property, to sell it or give it away. And I would ask that you, whenever you're making that consideration, stop and say, "Is that in the best interest of the city?" As our new council is oriented to its task and jobs, perhaps the first item on your checklist of considerations when you're looking at actions to take is, "Does this serve the citizens? Is it in the best interest of the city?" Thank you.
Thank you very much. Having no other public comment, bring it back to the table.
Remembered the mic that time. I just have one question, and this is for future reference as well. When there is a... You know, the appraisal is done and there's a minimum bid requirement. The minimum amount here at the 185, that also incorporates the cost to advertise and the escrow expenses. Those are wrapped into that 185 or are those on top of the...
Not there.
Do you understand the question?
Yes.
Steve Hardisty, again, Public Works. No, it's not. It's just the appraised value of the land itself. In some cases, if we're working with somebody that was interested in purchasing a property, we can roll the cost of the appraised... Of the appraisal into the value of the appraisal. Roll the price of the... Cost of the appraisal into the sale price.
Okay. So, when this went out to bid, it didn't take into consideration the costs for the appraisal or the advertising costs involved with the auction?
No.
Okay.
Mayor, may I follow up with Mr. Hardisty, please? Mr. Hardisty, when the city did that review of surplus properties, was there any context about using or contributing some of those properties towards the city's contribution of affordable housing, particularly in light of the fact that there's a lot of... We saw through the stimulus bill more federal programs and availability for housing than we've seen in, you know, years ever.
I don't believe so, ma'am.
Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney. I did want to address the best interest of the city in Resolution Number 7776. It does read in that resolution, in accordance with NRS 268-061 and the appropriate Reno Municipal Code, the city... Excuse me. The Reno City Council hereby determines that the sale of the city-owned property, giving the APN numbers that you have already referred to, is in the best interest of the city. So, that was done by resolution in accordance with state law.
Right. Okay. Any questions, discussion?
It's just a question for staff on this. And it seems like we might have had this discussion before. The people that bid on this, they own property close by?
Yeah, right next door.
They're adjacent property owners, yes, sir.
And they need this for parking, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that's really how this conversation kind of got started, was they were looking to purchase the property for additional parking for their...
Yes, sir.
And came to the city and said, "Look." And we said, "There's a process we have to go through to do this."
Yes, sir.
And they followed through it. And I think this parking is critical to their staying where they're at, correct?
I believe it's fairly important, yes, sir.
Yeah. I mean, and our concern in the discussions that we had, where we'd hate to see another business leave the downtown area, especially when there's something we can do to help them. And I think that's how we got to where we're at today. So, just some background for the new members.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would add to that, that I also asked, when this initially came to us, we still have the old Sinclair Building at Stewart and Sinclair, that we may or may not, at some point in the future, look to sell or reoccupy ourselves when times are better. And are these parcels necessary in part and parcel to a good sale of that Liberty or the Sinclair Building? And I was advised, the only reason why we picked these parcels up was for our own fleet, for parking of our own fleet, correct? And that it wouldn't be a necessary complement to the Sinclair Building, that it already meets and over exceeds the required parking for the Sinclair Building.
Yes, ma'am. That's true.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may. And I appreciate the history and I would agree, you know, from my understanding analysis of the Sinclair Building. The property... The bidder, are they... Mr. Hardisty, if I may. Are they to the east of the parking lot?
Yes. Yes.
And how much of that building do they take up? Do you know? And do they own that building?
They own the whole building. Yes, ma'am.
And they're in it? Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Dorch?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Based on what I've heard, I'll move to approve staff's recommendation on this item.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Oscar?
Second.
Okay. Have a second. Yes, discussion? Discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Resolution M22.
Resolution Number 7792. Resolution of acceptance of bid to certain... To sell certain city-owned real property identified as 252 and 262 East Liberty Street, APN 011-501-06 and 011-501-07, Reno, Nevada.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ordinance introduction.
Thank you. This is Bill Number 6835. Excuse me. Good. Ordinance amending, ordinance number 6213, for the purpose of establishing regular council meeting dates and times for the 2013 calendar year and the month of January 2014 to get other matters of property relating thereto. Since this is a first reading, the proper motion is a motion to refer when you get to the second reason... Reading, which comes at the next meeting, then it's a motion to adopt.
Right. Motion to refer? May I have a motion?
Motion to refer.
Mike?
Second.
Motion to refer. Still, give your motion on the mic so that it's recorded.
Motion to refer.
All right. And I got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Community development.
Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. This parcel... If I could get the overhead, Lynette, please. Camera's a little off today. There it is. Can zoom in? This parcel is located at the... Just east of the intersection of South Meadows and Double R and within the South Meadows PUD development. And this site was originally set aside for what was going to be Fire Station 12, which is now currently under design and construction in the Damone Ranch area. So, it's... I'm sorry. It's this parcel right here. And it is currently zoned MF21, although located within the boundaries of the PUD, the area to the... I can show you better on this map here. Once again, here's the parcel. The dark orange is MF21, so 21 units to the acre residential. And the tan area over in here and here is all commercially zoned property. So, the city does own this property. And to make it more marketable, since it's no longer needed for Fire Station 12, this would be an initiation for staff to move forward with looking at it as a zone change to match the commercial zoning adjacent to it to the west. This is just initiation. It's not the zone change itself. That would come forward in later meetings through the Planning Commission and two meetings to you. And I'm available for questions.
I have a question.
Okay.
And I'm sorry. Okay, yeah. Ms. Hanson, what is the land use surrounding the little in holding parcel there? And who owns it?
The land use surrounding... I'm not aware of the owner. This is all multifamily over in this area, commercial, mixture of residential and commercial up in here, commercial and commercial.
So, it's one...
And single family. So, it's a mix of commercial to the...
But it's a multifamily zone property. Is it developed multifamily? Is it condoed out, individual ownership?
This is multifamily. This is ownership.
Okay. Okay. You know, I guess a couple of things is, first of all, when staff brings forward a request to rezone a property to increase the markability, you know, that's not a consideration that is one considered in our zoning ordinance or under state law. And if a member of the private sector came through and said, "We want to rezone this property to market it so we could, you know, put it to higher zoning, higher use," that argument would not fly. So, I have a little discomfort that we are doing something that in our role that, you know, the private sector does is selling property for profit and phrasing it that way. I mean, so, I'm a little uncomfortable with that. And maybe I can just leave that on the table because there'll be an analysis. But I just think that when government does things that they engage in with the private sector, selling property, they need to be held at the same standard. And so, I'm a little discomfort. And, you know, the land use consideration of going to this, it's one of the sub-planning areas in the PUD, correct?
Correct.
What are the uses allowed in there?
It's a combination of the AC and CC zones, so general commercial uses.
You could get a drive-through right there, couldn't you? Is 24-hour operation allowed adjacent to this?
In the South Meadows PUD, I don't believe it. We would analyze all that through the zone change process. This would just be the initiation.
Yeah. You know, I think we're kind of going down a road that could maybe have some unintended consequences. I would support the motion to introduce, but with an analysis that's maybe a little more robust on what's the appropriate zoning. I don't really know or see a problem of keeping it what it is and letting the purchaser roll the dice on what that person feels is right. They may... What if they come back and wanted MF21?
But isn't this... We're going to have... End up with this property and we're trying to get the zoning changed so we can get more value out of it.
That's correct.
And, to be honest, Bob, I think it's more of an appropriate zoning for that area. I think it's more compatible with the area. But those are all issues that are going to have to come up as it goes through the process.
Sure.
And I appreciate the issues that were brought up. But again, all this does is start the process. It has to go through and meet all the findings, has to go through the process of the change and through the Planning Commission, through the Neighborhood Advisory Board, through the Planning Commission.
That's correct.
And then back to us. So, I mean, I think there's a process. And if it's... Along the way, someone doesn't think this is the appropriate zoning for that location, we're going to hear about it.
That's right.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would add to that as a historical piece. Several years ago... Claudia, you're going to have to help. I'm sure it's been... It was for about a two- or three-year period, but it's been maybe three years. We did have a buyer that was very eager to pick this up and absolutely wanted to use it for cash. They were going to pay cash and wanted multifamily. Correct?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I'm not aware of that.
Yeah. Bob was on that call, as too.
There was an individual that was looking at it.
Almost weekly phone calls. Yeah.
And I understand and I'll support the introduction. I just want to make the point that when we have the authority of the land... Of our land use powers, you know, if we went through enough gymnastics, we could put it a hotel casino on that. But we have to look at it even, too, in terms of, you know, we're trying to raise money for ourselves in highest value in disposing property, but we also have that other role that we play, too. And I'm discomfort in seeing we're, you know, trying to raise money and markability of property and we look at it on the zoning issue is our primary responsibility.
We understand. Do I have a motion? Oh, I've got a motion and second. That was a discussion. Yes, ma'am. Anybody? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Q2 identification of... Well, let me go first. Let's go back to item C4. Mr. Dorch? I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Show the vote six one. All right. No.
Mayor, are we... I'm sorry. Are we on item Q1?
No, C4.
Oh, we went... Jumped up. We jumped up. Okay. I see.
Now, we're going to item C4.
Well, no. We've got to decide what we want to do with item C4 now. It's like we're hearing it fresh, so...
Oh. We're hearing it right now in this meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was for a future agenda.
Nope.
Okay.
You've made a motion for reconsideration.
So, now we get... And now I need to make a motion to deny.
At this legal council, at this meeting or does it have to be on the future? Because it's not on this agenda.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. This item is on the agenda as C4. The motion relates to that and we have already provided a confidential on the ins and outs of that reconsideration and legal parameters associated with it.
Okay. Okay. All right. We have a motion to reconsider?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
May I?
Yes, sir.
I have a sheet.
That's fine.
My name's Steve Balkenbush. I'm a attorney and represent SK Baseball and Nevada Lands. And what... and what, with respect to this issue, it's my understanding the only issue that's going to be reconsidered, that, that the council's trying to reconsider is the limited guarantee that was approved today. Am I correct on that?
That's the only thing that's in front of us today.
Tracy Chase, again, Mr. Mayor, that is accurate because that is the only item on the agenda that you have provided notice to the public on.
That's, Mr. Mayor, we believe that there is an issue with, with respect to whether this board can vote on this under its own rules today because the prior council that voted on it today, we, we believe that's a final action, we don't believe under your own rules that you can, this council now that's reconstituted can vote on what was approved earlier and so, and, and in addition to that, Mr. Mayor, the, my understanding is the contract has also been signed and filed, so that's, that's another one of our objections and we don't believe that there has been fair notice either under Chapter 40, 241 of the open meeting law that, that this item would be reconsidered by a new city council after it's been approved by the old city council today and so those are, those are our objections, we just want to state those for the record and thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, under council rules, the process says a reconsideration can be made in the same meeting or in the next regularly scheduled meeting under the rules. That being said, there are certain items that are dependent on whether or not they could be reconsidered under parliamentary procedure. This particular reconsideration, there, there is a legal concern with it and we've advised you of that in the, in the confidential memo. However, in researching this matter, no Nevada case law was located that, that determines when a contract has been finalized for, for this purpose, for municipal government purpose. And so there is a legal issue that ultimately the courts may have to decide in this matter. We've given you our legal opinion on it and if you have any specific questions we can answer, we will.
Okay. All right, Mr. Dorch?
I've already made a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and I have a second, I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Motion carries 6-1. Identification of mayor and council agenda items?
For next time, Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, I understand at the November 7 meeting, there was an item E1, which was discussion direction to staff and possible approval of a settlement and restructuring agreement and a support payments agreement. I'd like to motion to reconsider that. I understand our rules are that a motion to reconsider any action may be only on the action, the day the action was taken in, at adjourned meeting or at the next regular meeting. We are at the next regular meeting. I also understand that those rules say that this reconsideration may be made by a member of the prevailing party. A member of that prevailing vote, excuse me, is not sitting at this table, other than the mayor, who I understand is not motion. So with those, that back pattern in front of us, I would like to then ask for next time that we suspend the rules for the purposes of reconsidering that item. I think if there was ever an item that we could suspend rules for, for reconsideration, it would be this one due to the unique circumstance that we, of all the hundreds of items that agenda comes before, the prevailing party, you know, is no longer here to make that motion per the rules. So for next time, I'd like a, an item to suspend the rules for the purposes of reconsidering that item. If that vote is in the affirmative, then I would like to reconsider that item at a subsequent day.
Which item is that? I'm lost.
Okay.
Which item were you talking about?
I'm talking about the one last week that the departed council made related to the baseball stadium project.
Okay.
So my motion is at our...
No, it'll be on the next agenda.
Okay, okay, I understand, okay.
Be next agenda.
That's the item I'd like.
All right, any other items for the next agenda?
Mayor, I, I'd like to put on the next agenda and I don't know if this is something we do, I suppose we do, to reinstitute the caucus meetings?
I think that's a great idea.
On, on, do we need to give the date, that will all come out in the meeting on Monday, suggestions of when and what time?
Right.
I thought they were already on there.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council members, the, the dates for the caucus meetings are actually on the calendar that was provided in the item that you approved today, so they're typically the Monday before the meeting.
Have they been active, though?
They have not been active.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mayor, I'd love to also have the boards and commissions item returned to us with those for which we have vacancies and maybe a cheat sheet, and this can go the next meeting or the meeting after, of what is the function of each one, what is the statutory requirement, what are the meetings? I think this process of Mr. Ayazi sending this out when we were eight candidates and, and having it done here at the table with, prepared by one council member who does not, you know, communicate and discuss with others, I think that was an unfair process and I'd like to revisit that, but I'm, I'm willing to move on to those that we have open still, but I think for the good of all, a discussion on what's the scope of all of these boards and commissions.
Okay.
Thank you.
That'll be on the next agenda. Any other things for the next agenda? Okay. Ms. Adra, Ward 2, you have any, excuse me, Ms. Brackus, you have anything?
Layers on reports, please.
Layers on reports? Excuse me, I guess, that's right, I guess, any layers on reports?
I have no report.
I have nothing, Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Brackus, you have anything?
No, I have nothing, Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Adra?
I have no report.
Mr. Dogado?
Nothing here.
Mr. Dorch?
Nothing, Mr. Dorch.
Ms. Jordan?
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet. Ms. Shivi?
Nothing yet.
Any reports in conference committees? Public hearings, none? Any public comment?
I have none.
My favorite motion. Motion and second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.